And in two thousand and thirty four, the government is striving to streamline the procedures to further and advance the above a timetable. The government will seek funding approval in the middle of this year to kickstart the planning and engineering study for Longgu Town Reclamation and Replanting of Chin Moon West Area. If we view to strengthening manpower developments, we will propose to inject a one point two billion dollars into the Construction Innovation and Technology Fund to continue support the industry's application of advanced construction efforts and new technologies. And we mark a thirty million dollars to promote applied research and developments in public works in the industry, review to strengthen the overall productivity and performance of the construction industry. To enhance capability of coastal areas to respond to rising sea level and extreme waves caused by climate change, we plan to take forward appropriate improvement works and management and measures in the next five years for twenty six coastal low-lying or windy residential areas. Lastly, we will earmark an additional one billion dollars for the Built Heritage Conservation Fund to continue implementing the revitalizing historic buildings through partnership scheme. Where we where um through our collaboration with nonprofits making partners, we will revitalize and make good use of historic buildings in innovative ways. The funding will provide financial support for more private owners to maintain their historic buildings and we further support public engagements and academic research on the theme of built heritage conservation. Thank you. Mr. Chen Ho Feng, Mr. Andrew Andrew Lam, Miss Mr. Rock Chan, Mr. Tony James and Dr. Tam, Dr. Tam Yuh Hang. Five minutes each. Mr. Chen Ho Feng. Thank you, Chairman. Now on D V B, zero zero one, that's my own question. Now the works branch said some it would continue to promote the principles of right tree and right place and principle as well as the vegetation diversity principle and six million trees and including shops and trees will be planted in this year. In under the epidemic, we can see that the people are free to have beautiful flowers in the community. They would um flock to take photos of them. Now has the developments bureau considered planting attractive trees? In Lantau and Tongchung along the Lantau trunk road, I see a lot of beautiful flowers and that's very refreshing. Earlier on in Shang Wan, I saw a lot of people are taking picture of a rare tree and that's very um and that was really that really made a attractive look uh attraction. People love going to Japan because they are different founders and florists in different seasons. Of course, we want Hong Kong to continue to continue to be able to attract some tourists. Now, do we have a greening master plan so that we can be more efficient in planting trees and flowers for members to public's enjoyments and for attracting visitors? Thank you, Mr. Chen. We talk about white trees, right place. We want to protect our slopes, protect soil against erosion as well as ensuring safety of trees planted and also vegetation diversity. So, Mr. Chen Mr. Chen's focus was on attraction as well as the aesthetic aspects, but it would be quite a scene with a huge side full of beautiful trees and flowers. So I welcome Mr. Chen and members suggestions. Now, it may be a little bit difference with our principle of right tree, right place, but that may be a direction we can take. Miss Lee. Yes, concerning Mr. Chen's suggestion, we have the greening master plan for different districts. We have considered the factors mentioned by Mr. Chen in selecting trees. Of course, we would consider about wind resistance and heat resistance of the tree species. On the other hand, in March, in different areas, the trees that we have planted have just blossomed and a lot of people went to take photos. And also, we have a trees for shading and a greening purposes in different districts. So whenever possible, we would consider factors like vegetation diversity and the size of the tree grounds as well as the attractiveness of the trees. So we will bear these in mind in the future when we plant trees. Full up question. So there was a period of time when we planted the same species of trees, a species from Taiwan and in Hong Kong for a long time. So it is about time that the trees are replanted, that is the Akashia confusa. So can we consider replanting so that we have a theme in Hong Kong? Like Miss Lee said, we have considered the aesthetical attractiveness of trees. So in the past ten to twenty years, we were more focused on protecting slopes, vegetation diversity and so on. In terms of attractiveness and place making, I think that's a direction we can try in terms of replacing the Akashia Confucius. I will consult Mr. Chen on this. Yes, in term, I would like to know how many trees, how many Akashia confusa needs to be replanted and so on. Mr. Andrew Lam, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Secretary. Reply zero zero five, my own question about the modular integrated construction or MIC construction model. I myself are all for this construction method. In reply, this mentioned that the governments would like to apply MIC method in capital works projects. So in terms of housing projects, there are many projects using MIC model. In terms of public housing projects, however, the uptake rate is lower. Most of the projects have adopted the prefabricated construction model. So I would like to know the collaboration between your bureau and the T H P, which you increase the uptake rates of MIC and what is the difficulty? I'm also involved in the transitional housing projects myself. I have a firsthand experience. The direction is correct. In reality, there are lots of operational details to be ironed out. For example, remote quality monitoring, there is difficulty. So how long have we, how long do we have to resource to to a remote manner of monitoring? We don't know. The factories are located in the mainland and Malaysia. So how can we make sure that the quality control is in place? Because it would take a lot of time and efforts to to rectify the mistakes. So what measures and what plans do the developments bureau have in mind? Thank you, Mr. Lam. In terms of promoting MIC in our projects, the developments bureau is the main facilitator. Yes, the T H B has not been very much involved in this. However, I like, two days ago, the T H B said that there are three projects are using MIC method. And some twenty thousand public housing units will be built up with the prefabricated construction model. Mr. Frank Chen said for size and on a near the hillside, when the site is narrow shape, it may be more difficult to use the method. In an N D As like Tongchung, the site is fast and flagged. MIC method will be suitable. So the T H B is speeding up the up, is speeding is increasing the uptake of the MIC method in terms of remote and quality control, Ricky? Yes, thank you. Many factories providing MIC services are located in the mainland. We had to go to the mainland for quality control. So the epidemic has affected us to a certain extent. However, we are still able to monitor the quality by installing cameras in the factories to monitor the procedures and also with Q R text. We can monitor the quality of raw materials and the fabrication as well as the delivery. Thank you. Some follow up. Now, from my firsthand experience, I can tell you that there is still a gap between the reality and the idea. So I think you have to implement a comprehensive B I M, including quality control as the factories as well as onsite fabrication and assembly onsite. The application of B I of B I M is still limited. So we should work to enhance the monitoring regime. In reality, it is common to have a default and it is a habit for us to rectify the defaults. I agree with Mr. Lam at B I B I M is very useful. So we will keep in touch with Mr. Lam. Mr. Rock Chan. Two questions. In relation to the opening remarks on D V B S zero zero four in relation to the construction of isolation facilities. In the opening remarks, the secretary said with the full support of the central people's governments, the government's liaison office and the designated contractor has established a tripartite liaison mechanism. And work, works departments are organized to set up a task force through close communication, aids community isolation and treatment facilities have been built in three months. That is a record speed. So is well praising. Now, the government is looking to streamline developments procedures. So that is also welcomed. So my question is, how we can replicate this efficiency onto other public works in Hong Kong? Now, the compulsory universal test has been put on hold and it seems that the isolation and treatments facility, isolation facilities have a lot of spare capacity. So what is the operational situation of these isolation facilities? Who is in charge? How can we make sure that these facilities build to the health of the mainland governments is, the central government is not wasted?
I'd like to follow on reply zero zero six. It is said that for twenty six low-lying coastal areas and windy places, you're going to make improvements. They're the coastal areas. This is to be given recognition. In five years, such improvement projects will be launched one after another. Like increasing the height of the sea walls and making sure that there will be front barriers to keep off the search. Why have, why do we have to wait for five years? We may be experiencing super typhoons, super rainstorms and low-lying areas will be vulnerable to such coastal hazards. So why five years and do you have any contingency plan to make sure that our lives and properties are safeguarded? Thank you, Mr. Chen, Mr. Rock Chan for your questions. Let me take the last question first for the projects to protect the coastal low-lying areas for those situated on government land. And if the issue is simple, we can start early and it can be completed in a few years' time. But then for privately owned sites, if we want to carry out government works, we have to have a negotiation. So it may take a few years' time. For other work, it may have a larger scope. And there are many issues like private land, hundreds of flats, et cetera. And our experience tells us that it may take between three to five years' time. For the details, I think I can have a separate location to explain the matter to Mr. Chen. Yes, a quick follow up. For the twenty six locations, can you not sort of prioritize them on a basis of risk? Even if it is situated on private land, if it carries a high risk, I think even private land owners need to cooperate with the government. Yes, noted. Before the work is completed, there will be some management measures. Among the twenty plus locations, there are quite a lot of them already been protected by some temporary measures. We'll talk to the H A D as well as other departments. We will make sure that we are clear about the management measures before the new improvement project is in place. In the interim, we'll still make sure that the risk is manageable. For the isolation and treatment facilities, I think Mr. Frank Chen has commented on that. By having such facilities, as the C has said, that would boost our capability to cope with the epidemic. With the infection easing, I think there is potential to put such facilities to good use. Well, in the case of Ching Yi, instead of putting up for tender for logistics use, maybe that can be sort of reinstated. For other locations, many of them are being run by the disciplined services and then for maintenance is to the responsibility of the developer or the contractor. Mr. Tommy Chan. The secretary has said that we had the support of the central government and with high efficiency were able to build each community isolation treatment facilities, providing a total of forty thousand beds. In addition to the maintenance assistance, I need to say, I put a record here that for the development bureau as well as these works departments, I think their colleagues have also contributed hugely so as to make sure that such facilities completed. I must express my gratitude. Now, if I may go to reply zero zero two. For the community isolation and treatment facilities, they were built so efficiently. Visa be that reply zero zero two isn't quite satisfactory. There were seventy out of, there were seventy projects experiencing delays. On average, a delay of nine months approaching almost eighty percent. Seventy out of ninety major category projects. Do you have an analysis of the reasons? And are you able to minimize the delay in future? Have you carried out any evaluation? Thank you, Mr. Chair. In our reply, we pointed out that for the delays, they are attributable to different reasons. Say, for example, it has taken us more time to go through the statutory process. Increment weather is also a factor. They were sort of experienced in the past, though not all of them were within our control. In future, for anything that is within the control of the government, we'll try our best to address them. Say, for example, we have the we have a college for the leaders of major projects, we'll train them. And we have the center of excellence for major project leaders. We in a high level of quality, we want to deliver the project on time. In recent years, and it has been mentioned by many members, that is the use of MIC. We are advocating the use of MIC. This will mean that we can expedite the pace and we can have it under our control. Yes, while you're on MIC, if I may also look at reply zero zero five. In paragraph three, it is said that it just hope that you want the private sector to adopt MIC as well as an incentive. There is a concession of floor area and it will be increased from the current six percent to ten percent. So what is the rationale? Initially, you provided a six percent concession. Has it been proved that it was not attractive? By enhancing it to ten percent, are you confident that it will be a good enough incentive for a private sector to adopt MIC? We are now proposing to increase it. This is evidence-based. While we have been promoting MIC, we have learned from the feedback of the market. If MIC is to be adopted, the thickness of the wall will be increased. In other words, the internal usable floor area will be reduced. So we try to see by how much it will be increased. On average, it is said that it will be ten percent. So we say that a ten percent concession visa be the original six percent should make MIC more attractive to the private sector. Secretary, even if you want to increase it to ten percent, I think it was introduced only recently. So I guess you haven't seen any results. We're watching it. Six percent, ten percent is surely better than six percent. And it just is a figure apart from seeing air. We based the decision on certain figures. Next, Mr. Tan Yeh-ho. Thank you, Chair.
I would like to follow up on my question. I would like to follow on zero one one. Reply zero one one. And this about the Construction Innovation and Technology Fund. I'm most grateful to the bureau for giving me a very detailed reply. Thank you very much. In your reply, you mentioned that in year twenty eighteen, October, a fund of one billion dollars was set up. And by February this year, six hundred million dollars have been spent. According to the sort of number of applications received in February twenty twenty three, the fund will be exhausted. That is, the whole amount of money will be spent in four and a half years. In other words, you're also trying to inject another one billion dollars into it, or one point two billion dollars. With the additional one point two billion dollars, for how long a time will it last? Because in year twenty twenty one, according to a survey, ninety four percent of the construction industry personnel would like to see an enhanced web safety there. And for forty six percent of the interviewees said that it will take us five years to apply innovation technology. I think you need a lot of input. For the four and a half years in the past, you spent one billion dollars. Now you inject one point two billion dollars. I think you, I just wonder if that amount of money is good enough. Can it meet the medium term requirement of our industry?
Thank you, Mr. Chen, for your quest, for your question. I would like to give a reply. Anything that is of help to the construction industry will be introduced by us and we want to have a further injection of capital. And we look forward to the electrical approval. This won't be the last time that we inject the money into the fund. At different stages, we need different plans. By having an additional one point two billion dollars, we believe that they can see us for another five years. But then if the money is spent quickly, then it will be a good sign. If it is set up in four point five years, then at an appropriate juncture, we'll come back to make an application and we look forward to your support. But of course, we we have to move from one stage to another. Thank you. Next, Mr. Tony Chan, five minutes. Thank you, Chair. Mr. Chairman, if I may follow up on my own question and reply zero one six. In N X three, for list two or Ben two architectural consultants, the number of projects undertaken is several. I hope you can benefit different types of consultants. Why nothing for Ben two? Is it because there was any works project suitable for the participation by Ben two consultants? And then the administration has been asked by the professionals to make sure the SMEs can be given the opportunity to take part in the public works. We hope that you can have the right arrangements in place so that even SME consultants can take part. We are grateful to the A S D for making certain arrangements. Sometimes a project may be huge in size, but then you will ask for a task to be broken up so that even Ben three architectural consultants can take part. I would like to know about the response. You have given us some figures. There were twelve such projects. But then for small and medium consultants, there is a large, there are large number of them. But then in the past, they thought that they didn't have the chance. And so since they knew that they might not stand a good chance, they didn't pay much attention to the opportunities. So while you are providing more opportunities, you're also trying to emphasize the arrangement so as to make sure that they can benefit from your new arrangement. And with their participation, I'm sure they can give you certain innovative ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your question. I would invite Ms. Ho from the Arch S D Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your question. I would invite Ms. Ho from the Arch SD to take the question. Thank you. I would like to explain table three. It seems that a Ben two consultants and participated in, didn't participate in any D and B works projects. Or design and build a projects, they would be of a sizable scale, usually projects involving more than two billion dollars. So mostly, the team would be comprised of Ben of architects from Ben one consultants. Now, we are, we have been promoting a new policy in recent years for D and B projects and then projects awarded to private consultants. We would encourage them to collaborate with professionals and architects from Ben free. So there are more opportunities available now. For smaller projects, for example, parks and run by LCSD and a small-scale works projects, they would be separated in tendering out. So that's a Ben free architects have more opportunities to get involved. So for outsourced projects, there are some sixty projects undertaken by Ben one and Ben two architects. We have and two architectural consultants are very active in our D and B, in our projects. However, the table is about the D and B works projects, so they were undertaken by Ben one architects. Now, in table three, there is a, there is a category, works projects undertaken by other architectural consultants, and the value involved is at six point eight billion dollars. So can you explain that? Thank you, Chairman. Now, they are classified as other architectural consultants for D and B works projects. There are eight projects undertaken by a Ben one architectural consultants. So these are other architectural consultants, they are not involved in the design stage. However, they are engaged by the project by the, by the consultants in charge to help with the project. So they are classified as other architectural consultants. Mr. Chen Shih-hung, thank you, Chair. Just now, the secretary didn't reply my question head-on. That is, with the help of the Central People's Government, and a lot of isolation facilities that were built. So how can we replicate or how can we replicate the successful experience onto other projects? Now, on my own question, that is zero zero three. In the budget, it is proposed that construction industry council would be allocated with one billion dollars for manpower training. I think it would help to enhance the capacity of the talent pool. Now, the CIC has done a good job. Many people were trained each year, however, not a lot of these graduates would join the industry. Now, very often, the governments would shout out money to help improve the image of the of the construction industry. However, the the result is not satisfactory. In fact, the wages of the construction industry is higher than a lot of desk jobs. However, because of the perception that a construction industry practitioners are have to a guest have is dirty as well as dangerous, that's why not many people join the industry. So how will the governments help improve the image of the construction industry and offer more opportunities to fill the talent shortage? Now, in the next six years, one billion, one billion dollars will be allocated to help upscale the intermediate tracement to tracement. Now, we understand that demand for construction talents will be, will be high because of the northern metropolis and projects and so on. Now, according to your assessment, is the amounts of talents and sufficiency and to meet the demand? If not, will the governments consider planning ahead, for example, importing labors to fill the gap? Thank you for your question. Previously, my, there was insufficient time for me to answer the question. Now I will supplement. Now, I'm for this batch of isolation facilities completed with the help of the mainland, I can truly feel the care of the country for Hong Kong, and they have really given us a lot of help. When resources and the manpower is in place, progress can be very swift and miracle can be achieved. In terms of policy, I reckon that a streamlining procedures are do have, do have any effect. However, for non-urgent cases, we have to make sure that the justice of procedural justice is observed. I think Mr. Chen Shih-hung would also support us in terms of streamlining and development control in other, for other cases. For MIC, Hong Kong is uniquely located. The G, there are lots of MIC production bases in the GPA. Constructed units can be shipped to Hong Kong in just one day, compared with other places. The MIC, the MIC bases are located far away, so adopting MIC method is the right way to go for Hong Kong. In terms of increasing the number of construction talents, the CIC is currently undertaking a study, which will, the results of which will be available in the third quarter. I will keep in touch with Mr. Chen about the study. It does not just cover frontline workers, but also the professionals. So a final point, we are doing our best to improve the construction industry image. We have the we have the award scheme, and also Mr. Chan, the chairman of the CIC, has organized sports events and so on. We understand that it is not a difficult, it is, it is a difficult job. I mean, the construction industry, however, we will work with Mr. Chan to enhance our efforts in improving the image. Mr. Tony Chan, five minutes. Thank you, Chair. I would like to follow up on my previous question on reply zero one six. A question has not been answered. That is in table four, the Architectural Services Department projects as for year two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three. There will be twelve projects open to participation by Ben three architectural consultants. Well, maybe I, maybe my question comes too early. For Ben three architectural consultants, only very few of them participated in governments' projects. So some architects, so some Ben three architectural consultants no longer pay attention to the opportunities. So how can we promote these projects, these opportunities that do Ben three architectural consultants for their participation? And also is the Architectural Services Department aware of the response of Ben one architectural consultants concerning these works projects? Are there any worries on their part? Ms. Ho, Director for Architectural Services. Thank you. Now, for the Arch SD, we have a lot of opportunities open up for Ben one, Ben three, and a Ben two and Ben three architectural consultants. For D and B projects, most of the participants are Ben one architectural consultants. We have projects of different scales. So there are equal participation opportunities by Ben one to three architectural consultants. Now, on the table, we only have a breakdown between D and B works projects and also of projects are led by Ben one architectural consultants. There is a requirement that they have to involve Ben three architectural consultants. However, there are smaller-scale projects. And when, whenever we come across suitable as small-scale projects of Ben three architectural consultants, we will surely involve them. In the past few years, we have been very progressive in organizing a design competition. Particularly for small-scale projects suitable for Ben three architectural consultants. We will surely organize more of these events if the, if the, if our if this is proven to be successful. So we definitely take on board Mr. Chair's suggestion. We will promote opportunities to Ben three architectural consultants. There is a long list of such consultants. We can explore ways to enhance communication with them. Chairman, I wonder if the director can give me more details. Now, for table four, the table is limited, is limited to Ben three consultants. So what about SMEs in year two thousand twenty-two and twenty to twenty-three? Are there any projects suitable for SMEs to participate? So please supplement, supplement me with the information after the meeting. Mr. Michael Look, would you please change your background? Because the rule is that you should display the color black background according to your constituency. Sorry, Chair, I was in another meeting. Now, I would like to follow up on my question. That's zero one six. That's a question put forward by me on MIC application. Now, the reply is rather vague. It is just said that there are projects using MIC, but there are no figures. Now, can the Bureau provide us with figures? For example, for public housing estates that with high demand, how many of them are being built with MIC? And what is the reason for not using MIC? Now, the industry told me that the MIC is, construction method is very mature. Compared with a conventional construction method, there is not much difference in terms of aesthetic and quality, if not even better. However, there are concerns whether MIC would, would affect the employment opportunities of local builders. Now, on the prefabricated units, the government said that there are some local companies intending to join the business. So it may require a lot, a rather large site, which is currently vacant. So would the governments offer any policy incentives to encourage businesses to set up factories for MIC at the same time ensuring the employment opportunities for local builders?
Thank you for your question. Let me talk about the case of public housing. I think a day or two ago, the Director of Housing said that there, there are three projects deploying MIC. And Mr. Frank Chen, STCH, also said that ten, twenty thousand housing units should be suitable for the use of MIC for both the public and the private sectors. Yes, we would like to have more extensive use of MIC. So far, we have got seventy such projects. I'll be happy to populate the information for Mr. Look now. For the prefabrication of the units, I think by getting them outside of Hong Kong, it can address one of our problems. That is shortage of manpower, especially the aging of the manpower. Despite the use of MIC, there is still a lot of work that can only be carried out on the site itself. There, for example, bar fixing. Mr. Look is right. If we are to have a large-scale plant locally to manufacture and store the MIC units, it may not make economic sense. Maybe Mr. Look didn't, wasn't here when I gave the reply to the earlier question. Ten, twenty thousand units have been built by deploying MIC for the purpose of isolation and treatment. Hong Kong has disadvantage. We are just so near to the source of the MIC plants. They can come via a land route or water route, and that can drive down the cost. I just wonder if the government can provide a favorable land policy so as to enable the development of an MIC plant locally. Well, I don't think there is a favorable land policy for such, I have to be frank with you. Now, for business activities, we have to switch, we have to stress the importance of being fair. Of, of course, I can't grow anything. For Hong Kong to develop the manufacturing of MIC units, we just have to back the question, whether it is practical and realistic. As anybody approached us saying that the government should grant a large piece of land to manufacture MIC modules, the question is, nobody has come forward. Maybe in terms of transportation or whatnot, I think we can do something about it. Next, Ms. Ho. Secretary, if I may, follow up on what Mr. Michael Look has said, that is having local manufacturing of MIC modules. The secretary said that we have a manufacturing base nearby in Guangdong Province. But I don't think that's the real picture. In fact, land transport between the mainland and Hong Kong has been disrupted. So the materials cannot be sent to Hong Kong. And then I don't think it's making good environmental protection sense. We need two hundred to three hundred billion dollars worth of MIC modules. I'm saying we should develop the business locally. You say that it is going to be difficult. But I think we need to enrich our industrial structure for the benefit of our future generation. So I think Hong Kong should seriously consider the manufacturing of MIC modules locally. Yes, it may have to make use of lots of land resources. But then for the But then for the northern metropolis, we are going to have three hundred square kilometers of land available. You can make use of the site. Yes, Ms. Ho, some. Point is, we cannot grow the possibility or the feasibility. Still, we have to talk to the industry. For certain tasks for bar fixing. For prefabrication of such tasks. Some of them is already being carried out locally. Do we have other members wishing to ask questions? If not, and this the end of today's session. I would like to thank the secretary as well as the other perfect offices. And then we'll resume at nine o'clock on the fourteenth of April for the next session. Thank you.